... allegiance, so we can just kind of keep people busy out there so they weren't tiring and feathering. So, welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, January 8th. Appreciate you all being here, and of course, we always do start with a pledge, and I do appreciate you all being available for that. So, we have a proposed agenda, and so at this point, we'd look to approve the agenda for a regular meeting for tonight. And what we would do is we would include the adoption of a consent agenda for the line items that are listed under Roman numeral six, personnel, and Roman numeral seven, new business. By way of explanation, the adoption of the consent agenda upon a motion and a second, and on affirmative vote by members present approves each and every item so designated. However, prior to the adoption of the consent agenda, any board member may remove any item from the consent agenda. This item will then come up for discussion as part of the regular agenda in the order that we would address it in the agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite routine matters so that the board has more time to deal with more substantive things, okay? So, I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented to begin. So, and that would be Mr. Forster. And then is there a second to that?
A second.
Ms. Gaginchance? And so, now, is there anything anyone would want to remove from either Roman numeral six or Roman numeral seven?
Number seven, Roman numeral seven, C and E.
Okay, so Roman numeral seven, and I apologize, it was C and E, okay? So, C, approved request for fundraisers and solicitation of local businesses, C1, and E, 1, 2, 3, 4, that being the disposal of obsolete equipment and materials, correct?
Yeah, 1 and 2.
1 and 2, okay. And then 3 and 4 would be separate and apart. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Forster or Mr. Jan Brown?
No.
Mr. Paul Fort, no, Mr. Aldrich and Ms. Gaginchance. Excellent. Okay, so with those items removed then, there's no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Then we have our agenda, those items would be treated separately. Okay, Roman numeral three, opportunity to hear from the public. The board is reserved this time to hear comments from the audience. Those wishing to address the board are asked to stand, give their name and address, limit their comments to five minutes or less per individual or group. Concerns and comments during this session should be directly related to items listed on the approved agenda for this meeting. Audience members seeking a response should complete a board correspondence sheet and return to the district clerk, Ms. Slagel. And those are at the back of the room, so if you want that opportunity, that's there for you. Then additionally, at the end of our meeting, we have an opportunity for anyone to address the board on any issue whatsoever. It doesn't have to be limited to the agenda, it can be on any item, so. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board on any agenda item? And if not, then I would close that then, and again, there's an opportunity at the conclusion if you care. Okay, then we have Roman numeral four, and that's the minutes from our regular board meeting, December 11, 2018. Could we bring that to the floor for consideration? Ms. Gaginchance? And is there a second to that? Mr. Aldrich? And then, okay, any corrections, additions, typos? Nothing? All those in favor signify by saying aye. And opposed? Those are approved, then that takes us to Roman numeral five, and financial treasuries report. And the first item we have is A, and that's our budget status report for November 2018, and our revised budget status report for June 2018. We do appreciate, Ms. Slagel, you sending out that additional information later today. I hope everyone did get a chance to at least get that and have that. But Mr. Forbes, I know, did bring some additional information as well. If you didn't, I believe, then Mr. Forbes, do you want to?
Yes, I have paper copies, and he's saying board members want it for November and June. What happened initially was, in the discussion with the audit committee, we discovered that the budget status report and the revenue status report that I gave the board in August was not the final. And every other year, I've waited till the audit has been complete, and I run the June reports. This year, I thought I'd be ahead of the game and run them in August. That was my mistake. So consequently, the information that you had did not reflect some of the year-end adjustments that typically take place, either through things that I do, such as setting up receivables for BOSI's state aid, or also adjusting entries that the auditor gave to us. So the revisions on the budget status report for June, which I have here, or were sent to you today, reflect all of those and is the bottom line for the school year. For those that are going to have trouble following this because they're big reports, simply look for today's date in the upper left-hand corner, and that will be the most current for each report, and then you can look at it that way. Also, we discovered today, I discovered today, that in my haste to run the reports, I didn't include the salary lines, so if you're looking at the one in the budget document, you're going to see about half of what the budget should be because the salary lines aren't there. This has that in there as well, and I apologize for that.
That's great. Yeah, so would anyone like a copy of that then?
I would like one.
Just ask them.
One is my number, one is Jim, and there's one for Ms. Surtis.
That's great. Thanks, Ms. Gaginchance. And Jan, you'd start with the June 30th then? Would you want us to, or?
As far as the budget status report is, I don't have any other comment on there unless there was a question.
Okay. Anybody have anything relative to those items?
I realize you're getting them now, so if a board member does have something that they need further explanation, let me go over the correct stories on.
Okay, and then if that were to happen, if we could do that by email so that everyone would have the same information, that'd be great. And then if we need to address it at the next board meeting, we could do that. Mr. Aldrich?
I hope that we're not going to vote on this today.
No, it's just a report. It's the treasury report that we deal with.
Yeah, well, it's moved here and approved treasury report. That's what I was.
Okay.
Well, here's my issue. Now that we have more time within the board meetings because of the consent agenda, we have every year, we have a budget prepared that directs the district on how to get to the end of the year. And I liken it to making a roadmap to get to Disney World, okay? And with all good intention, we get partway to our goal towards the end of the year, and there's little things that happen throughout the year that diverge from that route. And some of them are big, some of them are small, some of them have a small percentage, and I'm not too terribly worried about, but some of them are big. And we may get to Universal Studios rather than Disney World, which isn't a bad place, okay? But it's different than what we set out to be. And what I'd like is to go through this budget and what actually happened. You know, spend almost as much time going over this line by line, the way we do a budget, to say, this is the route that we took, and this is why we got to Universal rather than Disney World.
What's your timeframe that you're imagining? I mean, I'm hearing you say like halfway through the academic year, you would like to see where we're headed.
Well, I mean, I think that the June 2018 report is overdue, okay? And I, you're in a no-win situation because you want to do it before the audit, and then you want to do it after the audit, but it gives us, we're going to start with another budget process, and we're going to get another roadmap to Disney World, and we don't, the roadmap we had last time didn't get us to Disney World.
We don't know that.
Okay.
Well, I'm not sure. I mean, that's what I'm.
Well, I mean, I see variations here from the budget.
Right, so what's your timeframe though?
Of when this would happen?
Yeah.
I'd like to see it as soon as possible, from 2018.
Right, and be as part of the budget process.
I don't believe it needs to be.
And so, it can be separate and apart, but I'm just trying to put a timeframe on it.
It would be a financial analysis of the district for what happened in 2017, 2018.
If I may, I think I know where Mr. Aldrich is going. I've been here a long time, and there's been a wide variety of boards, and some boards want to have stacks like this, and some boards don't want to have anything, so it varies. So I think what's happened over time on some of these reports is that I give a no comment or I make one small comment, not getting a lot of questions back, thinking I'm okay, and now I'm hearing that.
Yeah, yeah.
That means you want a few more comments.
He got me.
And you want more detailed information, which is certainly no problem, I'd be happy to do that, yeah.
Well, to tag on to what Mr. Aldrich is saying, as part of what we've been experiencing with the audit committee and examining, is a lot of the information that John gives us in a paper form isn't necessarily revealing as to the actual status we're at. And, you know, I've asked John questions after the meeting and found out he simply, you know, says, well, that's not correct, but I know what's going on. And it's not to downplay where John's at, he just realizes that the computer prints out one thing in the format, we see it in one fashion, we may be tracking one line in this information report, and then see, you know, something changed drastically from month to month as we get these revenue reports or the status reports, and at that point, we find out that, well, it's going to correct itself in the next month. So, you know, a lot of the information that we get isn't really telling, and I think that's what I hear from Mr. Aldrich. And, you know, I think that's what John needs to clean up when we do get the great deal of paperwork in these reports. You know, people are tracking things in their own fashion as to what they're watching, and we're just seeing swings in dollar amounts that don't necessarily have an answer on the paper. And when you talk to Mr. Forbes, he says, I know, that'll be corrected on the next report. And it isn't always the case. So those are one of the big pieces that we went over in the audit committee meeting last week.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a handle on this for myself in terms of what you're asking for, and to be sure that you're getting what you want then. I mean, and that's really the concern I have. So, do you know what is being asked then?
What they're talking about was our discussion as part of the audit committee, and Mr. Surtis, I actually talked about this afternoon, which was essentially the need to be a little more detailed and explain a little more on the reports as to what's happening. So I'll take that. I mean, I haven't done that because it hasn't really seemed like there was that desire, but certainly, it's all available public information, it's all things that can be discussed at the audit committee level, the board level, at whatever degree you would like it to be.
Okay, I understand. So, Mr. Aldrich, I think what you're asking for is that it become crystal clear to the board during these presentations when there's things that are outliers, bigger expenditures or bigger swings in revenue and whatnot. And Mr. Hawke, what I think you're saying, have you talked a lot about the revenue report, and the difference in access revenue and what that is? It's one of the things we talked about at audit committee, we talked about at this board meeting.
That's one of the factors.
That's one of the factors, okay. One of the things that Mr. Forbes and I did, we actually went through the June 30th revenue report, and that's the report that you have that shows the over/under, and we went line by line by line, and, you know, went through an explanation of why were we $11,000 over here, and why were we $2,400 below here? We could go into that detail, you know, mostly if that's what the board desires, but that's an awful lot of information, you know, in every type of meeting. Is that what you're looking for, or are you looking for the bigger picture thing?
I do not want every line item.
Okay, okay.
However, there are, again, there are some large dollar amounts or large percentages that, we're going to start a budget process very soon, and every budget that I see, and it's not just here at the school district, we create a budget for the forthcoming year based on the budget for the present year. But the present year didn't get us to Disney World, it got us to Universal, and we're going to continue to make that roadmap to Disney World, but yet, if every year, we get to Charlotte and we turn right instead of turning left, we have to say, why is our budget turning right rather than left? And if it's every year, we need to do a better job at the budget process. But there's no financial analysis of actual income expense other than a fairly large report, and I'd like to have it broken down so that even I can understand that.
Okay, so let me just, let me take just a shot at this, okay? So, okay, I'm looking at fiscal year 2018, and I'm looking at the as of June 30th, 2018, okay? And so I've got Board of Education, continuing expenditures X, I don't know, contingent expenditures X, I'm not sure what C-O-N-T, continuing.
Contractual expenditure.
Okay, contractual expenditures. And we've got 63.5 that was appropriated for 2018, this is how I'm reading it, that we made an adjustment of 23.66, not sure, but that's fine. So our current appropriation is the 61.133.88. We expended as of the end of the year, right, because this is an end-of-year number, we expended half of, less than half of what we had appropriated. We had outstanding obligations of 24.5240 that were still needed to be paid, is how I'm reading that, and therefore, we had unencumbered $30,539.67. So, okay, and I'm just trying to get a sense, and so what I'm hearing Mr. Aldrich say is, hey, you know, okay, in 2019, you know, we actually increased our board expenditures, contractual expenditures, to $65,000. We only spent, well, we didn't spend $30,000 of what was appropriated before, so what I'm hearing Mr. Aldrich say is, hey, well, I want to understand that maybe, but more importantly, I'm also hearing from another conversation, and maybe what I heard from Mr. Hawke, is, hey, you know, we should start our 2020, 2019, 2020 budget at $30,539 for the school district board. You know, why are we appropriating 65 grand for contractual expenses for the school board when we know we only expended 30, and as of right now, okay, as of right now, we have only expended $8,400 this year? And so, is that what I'm hearing, kind of?
No, there's two things you're hearing. One is that some of this paperwork and information that's been given to us is incorrect when it's given to us, and that is due to the format, from what Mr. Forbes has told me, is set up in a computer. So, having watched this and tracked it for some time now, it seems evident that things are inflated or not necessarily used as they're appropriated, and we're, just as you said, I mean, you just said, $65,000, we only use 30. My concern came to the point where we're asking taxpayers to give us additional funds, and we're ending up with such a large surplus, okay? And that's.
And I'm hearing you, and I appreciate it.
And so, I guess what Mr. Aldrich is saying is the same thing that I have concerns about, is why are we asking for such a large dollar amount from our taxpayers? Because we've seen, what was the amount, John, $354,000 reduction in state aid last year?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. And why are we asking for more money from our taxpayers if in fact, we don't need that money with the large surplus that we have? Because right now, in reserves, we have one, I think $1.2 million in assigned, and we have quite a bit more than that in unassigned.
Yeah, okay.
So, we're asking for a little more reasonable start as to where we come up with a budget, and we're asking for some type of explanation as to what the money is going to be used for.
Okay, and so, again, just getting to this, and again, I'm not trying to kill anything, I mean, in terms of.
I didn't kill anything.
No, 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 what I mean is, I'm not trying to just beat, you know, dead horses or whatever, but I'm really trying to understand how this might work so that you get what you want. So, as an example though, just on this first page, as an example for June, what I've got is, I've got an expenditure of less than what was appropriated for Board of Education, but then I've got more expended under BOSI's finance and legal of $7,000. So, so, I mean, and again, I'm just trying to get a sense of.
Well, when you look at the end of the year, what was appropriated as to what was used, I should say, and what was left over, that's what I'm asking of us.
Absolutely.
And how do we, how do we find a way to track that so that we don't end up with such a large surplus, right? And that was one of our major concerns.
Right, and so, but to get there, again, so if you just look at one year as an example, I mean, so what is the most helpful timeframe to do a retrospective? Is it one year, is it two years, is it three years? So if I looked at three years of, as an example, Board of Education, contractual expenditures, if I look at the past three years, and I find that in the past three years, you know, we only used half of what's appropriated, that to me would, I mean, it's significant for one year, but if it's over a three-year period, boy, that's really significant, because that shows me, hey, you know what, we're appropriating more, but then, let me just, I'm sorry, Mr. Hawke.
I'm sorry.
And so then, if we're seeing that in the BOSI's finance and legal as an example, you know, that that's continually running a deficit, again, over a three-year period, that's really significant. And so what I'm hearing you say is that we really, yes, we want that end number, but to get to that end number and make an appropriate budget in the coming year, we also want to have that sort of tracking so that we're taking into account some of the contingencies that might take place. Is that fair?
That's very fair, and I would also have to say that my tracking went back 10 years looking at the total budget amount, and that was the whole discussion I was trying to have with the board to make them understand as to how we ended up with a surplus and where the percentages seem to differ over the time period of 10 years. So, you can micromanage that sheet there, there's 200, 300 lines on there. John does, you know, point out quite simply that things are going to be more and things are going to be less, and that's what you're stating, looking at those two lines. What we're talking about is in the whole big ball of wax, we're ending up with a large surplus and looking for places to create reserves for taxpayers' money that we took from them that wasn't necessary.
Can I also say, when you ask, you know, how far do we look at, when, in banking, when I prepare a loan presentation for a business I'm working with, I look at three years. One year is going to get you in trouble because there's things that happen in one year that are not always indicative of a trend. But you get three years, you can see trends, you can see outliers, and it gives you a better idea of how to prepare that budget. But the budget should be prepared by the actual, based on looking at the actual for the past three years. It shouldn't be based on the budget for the past three years, because all we're doing there is looking at the roadmap that we had last year that didn't get us to Disney World.
Right, and to get there.
So, so, let's look at three years of actual numbers, line by line, when we do the budget, and use those three actual line item numbers to prepare the expected budget.
Okay, so I'm hearing two different things, okay? I'm hearing you want the big picture, which I'm hearing you say, Mr. Hawke, and I'm hearing you say, we build off of the three years' experience is what you'd like to see in terms of that. And then, then it becomes an issue of. Okay, okay. And if John wants to wait till the audit's done so that we have it prior to the start of the budget process, that's a great time, I think. But let me clear that, because we have our audit done.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
We just had our audit done, and we're starting the budget process next month, now.
Yeah.
Next beating. Okay, so this would be a great time to say, this isn't what happened in 2018, 19, because we're in the middle of it, but this is what happened in the three years prior to.
Prior to that.
Let's create a roadmap for where we want to go in 2019, 2020.
Okay, so let me just ask three pieces, okay? One is, Mr. Forbes, do you see any problem being able to try to accomplish that?
No, first of all, I want to point out to the rest of the board that the discussion they're having now, we had the audit committee level, I understand clearly, Mr. Hawke, so I understand Mr. Aldrich. Interestingly enough to me, and I smiled when you said a three-year comparison, one of the documents that we used to give the board, and maybe some of you were on, maybe not.
No.
As part of the every budget presentation, the state had a document called the three-part budget. The three-part budget is comparative data, three years' budget versus actual, and then at some point, the board did want that document back. So that's readily available, I use it every day in the budget process. I just hit the right print button with all the stuff in it as opposed to not all the stuff that you get tonight, and then you have that information at any point in time in the budget process that you could do comparison. That will solve that problem. Second problem, which Mr. Hawke brought up in the audit committee, was that, actually, I probably said it, was over the last 10-year period, the mantra of the district was, we need to build our reserves, we need to build our fund balance. And so the process that we used to do that was, on the revenue side, to be pretty conservative, which is what the state audit report said we were, and then in certain areas of the expenditure side, to build in those extras. Sometimes they're there as your surplus, sometimes they're there in anticipation of a surplus such as high-cost special ed kids, you don't need to pick on special ed or anything like that. So you could track that through, and I could show you, if you took the time to sit with me, exactly where those things were. Utilities is always a good one, because we've had a great winter this year, you might have had one like last year where it was 20 degrees below zero. So those things came through. So part of the discussion with Mr. Hawke and the rest of the audit committee was, instead of building in this much surplus, now we need to build in perhaps a little more tight than the rest, and that's certainly something. It'll be a switch, but, you know, we're at the point that basically that's up.
Okay, so then the second was to Mr. Surtis.
So, the other part of that that we've talked about, that John and I have talked about, Mr. Forbes and I have talked about, is doing a five-year state aid projection, and trying to determine, based on the current formula, where our state aid is going to be going forward. One of the things that we always come forward with is the question is, we're not sure where our state aid is, we hope our state budget's on time, but these are the things that are out there. So, working with some other folks who've gone through that process, it'll give us a better starting point than we've had previously.
Then the third part is. Then the third part is, Mr. Janbrowne, and all of the other board members' thoughts. I mean, I think it's a great thing, but, Mr. Janbrowne?
No, that's fine if we have some members that are interested in that, that would be nice. I'd like to see it. Something we've had in the past, and it's probably important that may need to be done again for a better understanding of it.
Mr. Hawke, anything else you'd want to add?
Nothing.
No, and Mr. Forster?
No, probably the Committee.
Who's getting it?
No, I think it's a great idea. It helps us to be better informed, and if it's something that Mr. Forbes can do, then it's a good one.
Yeah, and Mr. Paul. Mr. Aldrich, you're good.
Yeah, I'm good, and just so that this is all very clear, this is not a, there's not friction here. I appreciate what Mr. Forbes does, I think he does a great job. I truly do. It's to get a better understanding of these numbers that I'm looking for, but, yeah.
No, I think that's-
He does a wonderful job.
Yeah, and I think that's wonderful, and, you know, and I think it just helps us all, just so we all know that we're talking about the same things is really going to be helpful to the Board, I think, so.
Is the Board still allowed to come to the Audit Committee meetings?
Is what?
The Board's still allowed to?
Yeah, we passed a resolution, I believe, at the July meeting that Board members may attend it, so that's available. Okay, okay. Anything regarding the budget status report then at this point? Beyond that, okay. Then we have the revenue status report, and that was provided. Mr. Forbes, anything you'd want to highlight there?
For that, I've got the revised June, same reasoning as the budget status report. I also have the November report. In your packet, you have three different revenue reports to try to address. Back to the one that I'm bringing up, is creating confusion as to where we're actually at. So anyway, there's a single page one called the Account Activity Report. I'm using the November reports right now, so it's January 2nd that we have the left. On that, it's got simply the estimate of what the revenue would be for the year and then what we've got to that point in the year. Still doesn't give you a handle for the year because we're going through it, so you don't know what you may or may not get. The second report, which I created at this meeting, is called the Revenue Report. And on there, I put a budget column, a received date column, and an over/under budget so that you, in comparison, can look across the line and see if they're above or below the revenue. Essentially, the report you were seeing before, that Mr. Hawke talked about, had two columns. I've combined this into one so that you don't have to see if there's any adding or subtracting. So I'm going to track this and run it for a couple months. I'll work on and get used to seeing it and see if it's something you want to maintain or if there's something else you'd rather have, if that's all right. And then in terms of for November, just to point out activity on the report, basically, November is not particularly busy. But I will point out a few things just so the Board can get a flavor of what I'm looking at here. So, about a third of the way down the page, under the admissions, which on the left-hand side is code 1410, in the current cycle column, there's a negative in the revenue for the month of $7,968. So when you're looking at your revenue report, the first concern you're going to have when you see a negative is why do I have a negative in the revenue report? For that particular one, we had taken in money for the Section 6 playoffs, and encoded it to revenue for admissions. Once the playoffs are over, we have to give them a portion of the fund back. So we took a de-do. Different months, money came in October, went out in November, so you're going to have a negative in November. Farther down the page, there's two codes, 3101, which is the basic formula, general aid, and 3102, which is the lottery aid column. In the current cycle, you see we receive $303,000, which is our general aid payment as expected. And we also receive $77,000 and change, which is our supplemental lottery aid payment as expected. So that's essentially the large tickets or the negatives for the month of November. So if that's an example of what I can give you every month, if that's what the Board wants to have as opposed to saying, no questions, no comment, I know what it means and no one else thought so.
That'd be great. I mean, I hope that would be helpful for Mr. Sipciano.
Yep.
And so just one other thing, the three reports that you have for November, they're also in there for the year end of June. The Board members will have to look at it and see if that solves any questions or brings up any questions.
When's your next Audit Committee meeting?
We don't have one on the list yet, but we're going to have one coming up because the internal audit report should be just about due, so we'll have to schedule that.
Would you, Christine, would you be able to just let all the Board know when that Audit Committee meeting is? And be able to flag it? Because I imagine that you'd then, maybe at that meeting, also have an opportunity to talk about these reports again, and so that if there were any changes to those, we'd be able to flag that at the next board meeting so that we get that flavor of that discussion if we haven't attended the meeting, that'd be great.
And we also have, still on the table, the question of the reserve funds, which the Committee members wanted, that takes a little more time to review, so.
Great, okay. Then that takes us to the Treasury report for November. We need to bring that to the floor of consideration. Mr. Paul Fortner with the motion, and Mr. Forster with the second. So, Mr. Forbes, anything regarding that?
Typically, I wouldn't comment on this either, but since it's my night, I guess. Basically, the Treasuries reports are the bankruptaciliations for each account. They're labeled as to what the account is. The top half is anything that you've received in. There's a listing of checks that they went out. If there's no checks, they may be dispersed by debit transfer, just account to account or occasionally, if it's a bond payment, NACH or a wire transfer. That'll give you a cash balance on the book side, and at the very bottom, you'll see a cash balance on the bank side. Those two numbers, much like with your own checking account, need to equal. So if you went through it with these, they do, and that's all I know on that.
Any questions about that at all? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In a posse? That's approved then. Mr. Forbes, thanks so much. Then we have the Audit Committee minutes from the December 18 meeting. Could be yours to the floor of consideration. Mr. Hawke?